Okay, welcome everybody to our Thursday night special meeting. Sorry, we're a few minutes late. We're trying to get everybody connected here, but I think most of us are ready to go. So we will start first with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Board Member Erica Cox.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Erica. Next, we will have the land acknowledgement by Connie Hennessy.
Thank you, Tracy. I acknowledge that the geographical region of Camas is located on the ancestral and territorial lands of the Chinook and Kowals people, and that the Chinook are still fighting to be federally recognized tribe on their own land.
Thank you, Connie. Next, we'll move down to item two, which is, I just lost my, I should know what it is. Open and effective communications. We're going to have an elementary update on the three-foot social distance guideline by Mr. Doug Hood.
I'm gonna start us off real quick and just walk us through some of the the normal slides that we use when we talk about reopening plans. So the first one is just our timeline. You guys are familiar with that. The last required update was March 1st from OSPI. Our guiding principles, the next slide. Decision-making rationale that you guys have used. Go ahead, Gail. And then this is our current status right now, so you can see that we've started to creep up our rates a little bit. We've actually kind of come full circle in the month of March as we started off at 105.4 and now we're at 105.6. Still well within the moderate range. I think in our last conversation with public health, there is some concern about Easter weekend, spring break, and behaviors. You know, hopefully we'll all follow this guidance and we won't see these rates increase anymore. I wanted to give you a brief update on the countermeasures. And so every two weeks, we've been giving you an update on our staff survey. This most recent iteration of the survey, we had about 400 and plus take the survey. Remember, we have about 1,000 staff members, so not bad, but we would still like more. If you can, one of the new questions that we've asked is about vaccinations. Just to give you guys an idea, I think that there's the staff that are responding to the survey are probably more likely to have gotten their vaccination. So it's maybe skewed in that, but you can see that about half of the respondents have their first shot. 6% got the Johnson and Johnson shot, which is a one-shot vaccine, and 30% of staff have already gotten their second shot. So that's great news when we think about where we were a month ago. And I know that staff are really grateful for this. When you talk with them, they're relieved. Some of them aren't feeling well after the second round. And so there's that, that all in all, that's a celebration and again, a call out to our healthcare partners in the community for supporting us with that. These are the same slides that you've seen throughout, and it's the five iterations now of our staff survey. Remember, blue is good, yellow is unsure, and red is like there's a concern from staff. And so we have been identifying areas with each school and our COVID captains have been looking at specific areas where we can improve our countermeasures. And so the first slide here is screening students on the left, staff on the right. The second one is about physical distancing, and as we've increased the number of people on campus, you can see that more it's difficult to keep everybody apart. And so I don't think this is all that surprising with this. It looks like I didn't get updated on the student slide on this one, so I'll make sure that data is in here for for your reference. The next slide is the masking. Again, lots of good trends with this. And then the last slide, I think, is cleaning and disinfection and HVAC standards. And our HVAC standards continue to be like, half the people feel like it's great and half the people don't really, aren't really thinking about HVAC. So I'll give you an update on that and see if there's any questions. Okay, next slide, please. Dr. Williams, did you want to take this one?
Absolutely. I can take this one. We're pretty excited now. We have all of our secondary students about to enter four days per week. And we go, well, that brings up questions about, well, what are we? Small groups are hybrid. We are actually at in-person, which was a definition we came up with in partnership with our unions. That means four full days of in-person instruction per week with our remote delivery model on Wednesday. And our capacity is determined by the physical distancing parameters that were recently brought out. And so if you continue on the next slide, you'll see on the 19th of March, the announcement came out that classrooms can move from six feet social distancing to three feet social distancing from the CDC. And then on Thursday, we've heard from our State Department of Health that we were adopting those three-foot social distancing requirements in our classrooms. And so on Friday, in Camas fashion, we sent out communication that we would be adopting those in our secondary classrooms by April 19th. So that means that we are able to now do four feet in four days a week with the three-foot social distancing. On Monday, April 12th, we'll have haze already in four days because they'll be starting their whole new quarter at that term, as well as our elementary schools will be making adjustments as needed to ensure students can attend their neighborhood schools. But Doug is going to talk more about that. And like I said, on the 19th, secondary gets to to continue. Next slide. And so with that, that three-foot social distancing, when we first saw it, we were really excited, but it came with a lot of complexity, right? So it's not three feet everywhere. It's three feet in the classroom. That's still there's three, six feet still at lunch. There's still nine foot between band students playing certain instruments and those kinds of things. So that layer of complexity was a great math opportunity for our secondary administration and teachers to try to figure out how to accommodate that. So they've been taking the time to do that. The six foot is still required when masks can't be worn. And then we'll have a conversation a little bit later when we do get to the secondary portion about what to do should we go back in high transmission. And the next slide. And so just like we've been doing with each and every transition, going down the checklist to see, are we able to meet these mitigation strategies in order to transition to the next phase? And so once that announcement came out on the 19th, we began some of that conversation and thinking about what would it take in order to transition to keep people safe? You see transportation and facility drop off. You see the ways students could be grouped or not. All of those items are what we are working towards to ensure that when we hit four days, we can continue to have school in a safe manner for our kiddos. And with that, I'll give it back to Dr. Snell.
Gail, do you want to get it to the next slide if you can? Thank you. That's okay. So actually, I guess Doug, it's you. Sorry about that. Yeah, or do you want to? Do you want to just jump online? So, and you're present?
So really with the elementary update, knowing that the guidance went to three feet, at the elementary level, it didn't make the significant changes that happened at middle school and secondary school or high schools for for the April 19th day because we were already going for four days a week. But it does two things. One thing that it allows us to do is for students to now attend their neighborhood schools. And when I say that, I'm meaning their resident school. So prior to the three feet, when it was six feet, we actually had classrooms and grade levels that were full at all six of our buildings. It just depended on what grade level. Well, now that goes away, starting on April 12th, which is a great thing so that we can attend our neighborhood schools. The other thing that will it will do is allow teachers to have more flexible space within the classroom. To make it work for the six feet, they did some some magic. Basically, now they get to bring back some of their teaching stations if they choose to, a reading rug, those types of things if they want to. So those are the two big impacts at the elementary level.
Thank you, Doug. So next, I think we'll move on to the secondary update and Dr. Williams will be back on that one.
Okay, so yeah, so we're at the secondary and just a little bit more about our transition. So with this, of course, came questions about how we're going to make the transition work in certain spaces. Most of our classrooms were really back to their pre-COVID capacity in terms of keeping students at three feet apart because three feet ends up being a little bit closer than you think. And you see this cool little triangle of the three-foot triangle that was created by Adam Weber at Camas High School. And you see Sienna, the COVID captain at Camas High School, using that tool to help teachers visualize how they can seat students, especially like the the picture there in the upper left is of a science lab where you kind of have these large, large tables and sinks and things that students have to work around. And so it makes seating very limited in some of your options. And so being really creative. And down in the bottom right picture, you see Sienna and Heidi going over kind of room by room. We ended up going through about 17 classrooms throughout the week to say, to help teachers just visualize and and see what that capacity piece could look like. And this on top of all the awesome things that have happened, spring break is coming up, this week was forecasting, and just getting staff, you know, the the tools and equipment they needed in order to move forward. Now with this, because of the distancing requirements, there will likely be some additional staffing. I just got off the phone with the principal who who's going to need some support in terms of what he's doing with his remote learners. But things like that are the adjustments that the secondary staff are making in order to do this well by the 19th. And again, I've mentioned the mixture of, you know, three feet here, six feet there, nine feet there. Just a little bit of complexity that they're navigating to change locations of things, to replace furniture or add desk or replace tables and those kinds of things. And some of the routines that are going to have to change because now you've essentially doubled on some days, the you've doubled the the capacity of students. And so that's going to look a little different. But they're moving along. We're making adjustments and we're looking forward to serving our students four days a week. So thank you.
If you can go to the next slide, Gail. So one of the things that we wanted some input from you tonight is that it spells out in the Department of Health Guidance that if rates are in the high transmission level, that there's a couple of things that we should be considering cohorting and then potentially the six-foot distancing requirement again. And as Dr. Williams mentioned, six foot is in place for certain aspects right now, but the three-foot is the standard classroom dimension. And so I've highlighted that language here. So we would like some direction on that. The other thing that I think is important is they talk about this high COVID level of cases per 100,000 for 14 days, and they also talked about test positivity. In the actual guidance, they cite two sources, the Governor's Risk Assessment Dashboard, which would look like the top right of this slide, and the DOH Dashboard, which is the bottom right. Now, on the DOH Dashboard, I am not able to find readily the cases per 100,000 for 14 days, and I'm not able to readily find the test positivity. So to me, it's a little curious that that's cited as a place. I can find that on the Governor's Risk Assessment Dashboard. But if you could go to the next slide, Gail. The reason I want to pause on this is because the question that our public is going to ask is where are we getting our data to make these decisions? And I just pulled this yesterday. Clark County Public Health has our 14-day rate of 105.6 and our test positivity of 2.77. The Governor's Dashboard has us at 112.4 and 3.44. Now, they're neither are inaccurate. It's just when you pull that data, and I think it creates some confusion. So my recommendation for you to consider is because we are working weekly with Clark County Public Health and they can address the data and talk to us about it, I would recommend us using the Clark County Public Health data. That's the data that we've cited throughout this. And if we have confusion or we want further information, we know who to go to. The state dashboard, I'm sure that we could find somebody at the Department of Health, but I don't think we would be as readily able to access them. So that's one point I'd love to hear any thoughts that you have on that or if you're comfortable with us moving forward with.
I, yeah, I would agree just using the Clark County Public Health since that's what we've used this whole time to me. That makes the most sense. And that's always the number I'm looking for and the number I can easily find as well. So I think that's my opinion.
I would have that.
Consistency of of timing, like you said, neither one is wrong, but we've been going from Clark County Public Health. So I think we should stay consistent with that.
Can you, can you hear me?
Ditto. Also, I think that's where our families and community and staff are used to going and looking. And if we change it around, that's just going to be more complicated. So I agree. Stick with Clark County Dashboard.
I just want to acknowledge real quick that we do have Doug Quinn. I see him with a thumbs up and Corey McHenry are on the call. So if either of them had any comments.
I am, can you hear me at all?
Corey, I think.
This is Doug. This is Doug. Can you hear me, Tracy? Hello? Okay, if you can hear, okay, I am on board with that using Clark County and local health data as we move forward with this decision rather than the state level data. Absolutely.
And I'd be the exact same way. I feel like the the public health data from Clark County has been more up to date throughout this whole pandemic than the than the the state dashboards have been. So I feel like we're going to get the most accurate data from there. So yeah, definitely public health for me.
Thank you both, and we heard you both loud and clear. So thank you for that.
Okay, next slide, Gail. So then the language does talk about if we are in this 200 range or the 10% plus test positivity, and I would like to just hope that the rest of the year, we're well below that and we don't have to worry about it. But we've recognized throughout this journey that what we hope doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen. And so I just broke this down into some direction that you gave us previously. When we thought about what it might look like to transition to, we had looked at that rate of 200 and we talked about a range of plus or minus 25 to give us a little flexibility because one of the decision-making rationale that you guys have is to try to limit transitions. I know it doesn't feel like we've been able to do that, but in reality, we have been incremental in not having to go backwards a whole lot. And so when we looked at this, I'm looking at three levels, approaching, concern, and an evaluation level. And so what would happen, our suggestion that I would like input tonight is that when we are in the approaching concern or evaluation level, that we are going to use our partnership with Clark County Public Health to better understand, are we seeing transmissions in schools? Is there something happening that we're doing that we need to be aware of and maybe we need to slow down on the in-person activities to adjust? Or is this activity in the community that's just because of the presence of COVID-19 in the community? And our schools aren't having an impact one way or another on that. We're just seeing the cases coming because the cases are out there. So far, that's what's continued to happen throughout this from November. And we also are tracking that on our CSD Dashboard. So we could look at our dashboard site to kind of see what's happening as well and get that Clark County perspective. The other thing is we've noted that that sometimes there are events in the community that are contributing to the rate. And so if there was an event per se, like at a business or something that would made our rates go up, does that mean we should slow down or back off what we're doing at schools and just having those conversations? We mentioned earlier that we have a lot more staff vaccinated. So what's the effect of that? One of the positives, one of the many positives of getting vaccinated is that if you are exposed or a close contact, you don't have to quarantine for the entire time if you're not exhibiting symptoms. So that definitely helps us from a workforce standpoint. And then the last layer that we've added in is the screening testing of COVID-19. And we've started that with staff. We also hope to expand that to diagnostic testing after spring break. And so we have a lot of layers of mitigation that we've been able to add to this. And so my recommendation is that we would not go backwards on our four days and move back to hybrid until we were at the 225 or plus. And then, and if we cross the 225, it wouldn't mean that automatically we'd go back, but it would mean that I would collect data and bring it to you as a board to make that decision. And we wouldn't necessarily have to wait until a scheduled board meeting. You know, we could call a meeting and say, you know, hey, look at, we're at 2:30 and this is what's going on. We really need you to weigh in on this. So that's the thought that I have right now. I know Dr. Williams just presented it just in her staff meeting. She met with staff this week. And we just tried to gauge where staff were at. And as you guys know, throughout this, people are very polarized in what they think. And so we just try to listen to all kinds. I don't know if Dr. Williams, you'd like to share that experience?
Yes. So and and we're meeting, we're talking about meeting with staff who, you know, have questions and and some concerns to make sure we're keeping them safe and the students safe. And the one of the the comments was, you know, that they would want some consistency, right? You know, not necessarily going back and forth or, you know, instead of the direction of going back to hybrid and that kind of thing. And so there didn't seem to be a desire, just in the preliminary conversations that I had, we would, you know, we can, we can speak to more staff if necessary, but in our preliminary conversation, there seemed to be appetite for continuing with four days. So I think it's something we could explore.
So again, like the previous slide about the dashboard, I'm just curious about board members' reflection and thoughts about this kind of a strategy moving forward.
I'll jump in real quick. I think that it's so exciting to get our kids back in school for four days. And our goal has always been to get kids back to school when it's safe. And and once we're back to school, rather than hopping back and forth to really drill down into the data, if the numbers go up, to understand why they go up. Is there something happening on the other side of the county? Is it isolated to one particular facility or business or something? And really understand that before we would take the move to go back to. And when it said either cohorting or six-foot distance, if it's six-foot distance, that's a cohort for us, right? Because we just can't fit our secondary kids in at three, at six feet with all of our students. So I, I mean, I think our first obligation is to keep kids in school as much as possible and to really understand if we decide that it's unsafe, then we'll have to make that tough choice. But my vote is for keep the kids in school as long as possible and really dig down in the data and make sure we understand the numbers before we make a change.
100% agree with that. I don't want to yo-yo, and I really appreciate the conversations with staff to get their feedback in in case we are having to look at making decisions like this, just so they have an awareness of what is being, you know, discussed and decided upon. So 100% agree.
I also agree, and I appreciate appreciate the flexibility here, that it's not just a hard stop number. We're going to go back this or that way. So we're flexible in what we're doing. And I know that at each board meeting, we get updated on what these are. So if we're thinking of going one way or the other, we're always talking about it. And like Jeff said, we can have special meetings whenever we need to. Hopefully, we don't approach any of these high numbers for the rest of the year. But I'm on board with doing this as well.
And I would support the more stable stand stand by our commitment to move back to in-person. I have to confess, if we reach a level of concern at 200 inside school population, I will be hard pressed to to really see it go. I mean, at that point, something drastically or dramatically changed because our patterns are not that. I think that would be very concerning. So I'm, I am confident or comfortable, I guess, with the protocols we have. If we won't see that happening. I appreciate the check-in, the kind of the default to remain as opposed to the default to stop our our practice. So I can live with this. And again, I'm very hopeful. I don't ever see concern, that concern level popping up at 10%. Jeff, you said we were just under two or three. I think three was the number at the state or the regional level. That would be concerning, but I can support this path forward.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with everything that's been said. The only thing I would add is that I would hope that, and I know that this will be happening, but I just want to make sure that we're, we're pointing this out, that the the consultation with public health and all of that is happening at all of the levels. It's not just happening at the the evaluation level. I think I hear about, I hear the word evaluation. I think, okay, that's when we start having, you know, we start trying to figure out what's going on. I think these things are going to, you know, as long as we're having these conversations. Jeff, I think that our districts, our relationship that we've had with Clark County Public Health, that that you and others have helped to foster is going to put us in a good position to be able to be, to really understand if we have some sort of, you know, uptick in our numbers, to really understand what's going on and how that is affecting Camas at a local level and within our district. So I would, I definitely support this plan.
I just want to pop in one last time. I just wanted to put a thank our community and staff and students going into Easter weekend and spring break for, in advance, for your diligence in making sure that you're being safe. I know we all have cabin fever and we might have little outings planned or vacations, but please do it safely so that we can continue keeping our schools open. And so we appreciate your attention to that.
Well, I really appreciate the feedback. Thank you, guys. I know this is really difficult and we want to be thoughtful about it and recognize, like we said, that all of our stakeholders are probably have different perspectives of this. And but we want to be, try to acknowledge what the challenge is, where we're at in the process, and how we will try to make a decision in the event that we do approach those numbers. And Corey, your points, well taken, that that will be a regular conversation with Clark County Public Health. And already talking about, well, we went from 90 to 105. What does that mean? And, you know, just talking again about vaccinations, variants, all these different variables that are at play with this that we need to be mindful of to to keep our schools open. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for those updates. With that, we will move on to our last item on the agenda, which is our superintendent's search update. So as you guys know, we have hired McPherson and Jacobson to help us, and they agreed to help us with the interim search as well as the long-term search that we're going to do in the fall. We have, we've had a lot of discussion with them amongst ourselves and community members about which way we should go with that. I think we all realize that Jeff leaving is big shoes to fill. But that doesn't mean that we can't have growth and opportunity in that. And I think we have to look at that. Look at this as we might be a little bit uncomfortable in what we're doing, but that's how we grow and that's how things get better. So I'm excited for this process that we have going forward. I have faith in this company that we have hired to help us, and I have faith in our community and our staff and everyone else who is going to help us find the right person when we get to that point. So if you guys want to have any discussion about our interim and the way we're going to go with that, and also remember that Corey and Doug are on the line as well.
Yeah. Um, you know, I, I, I agree with you, Tracy, that we, we heard such great feedback from the community and staff and students in just discussing what the leadership qualities are that that our community wants in our next superintendent. And I think the importance here and the value that we have is a vested community. And we want to respect that and give that the time it deserves for a rigorous and transparent selection process. So being able to start in the fall and have an interim, you know, in the following year will allow us that luxury of time for that community involvement and that transparency, which does take time. you know, in the following year will allow us that luxury of time for that community involvement and that transparency, which does take time. And so with that, I I believe an interim for next year is the right way to go. Do you want to talk more about?
Corey or Doug, you want to jump in?
Say that again.
Do you want to jump in? Do you want to add comments?
Sure, I'm I'm just transitioning to my laptop, but I will work from my phone. Obviously, the the process we go through and that Britain brings the community along, brings this decision forward as engages the groups that we know need to be engaged to help us make a decision that's a community minded decision, I think is important. And as we, as we get going, I think the Jacobson group, the McPherson Jacobsons is a very qualified. Their their recent work here in our county, I think, shows that. I'm, I'm the the path to an interim makes makes and provides the time for us as we move into the conversation around an appointment of an interim and having conversations around who might help us with that and how we might move that forward is a significant step. And I I'm comfortable after, you know, some conversations that that we have capacity within our district to help support the placement of an interim. And I can, hopefully, I think we can find somebody that can help carry that continuity on and as we, as we move forward with this this process.
Yeah, I would, I would echo a lot of that. I think that what our, I think that what our district, what our our community needs the most right now is stability. And and so I think that an interim allows us, that stability allows us that continuity while we really, we really continue to gather more input from the community, from within the district, staff, students, all of our stakeholders and and really get this right. I think I said in the last meeting that this is like one of the, this is, this is the top job of the school board is 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 making that superintendent selection. And so I appreciate that my, that my colleagues are being so deliberate about this and and really thoughtful in the process. So I'm, I'm 100% in agreement with the 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 path forward that we talked about last week about going forward with the interim to really, to really lay the groundwork for some important conversations in the next school year about who this community is looking for to to lead us to that next level and to continue our, to continue that path forward.
I agree with everything that's been said and just to reiterate that hiring a search firm allows our community and our staff to be very involved in a very transparent process. And the timing of doing that between now and the end of the school year is just too tight to do it now, thus the interim. And and it, going through that process, we could end up with somebody that's already in our system. We could end up with somebody outside the system. It's not disregarding either of those, but it's just giving time for the process. And so with that, I would make a motion that we appoint Doug Hood as our interim superintendent for this next year while we search for a permanent superintendent.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. First by Connie, a second by Erica. Is there any other discussion, Corey or Doug or anyone?
No, actually, I would be in support of that appointment on an interim basis. I given the, given his capacity and the conversation, I think it would be a nice, stable step forward for the district. His, his work has been exemplary and I think he will do a fine job during this interim window as we secure, you know, a broad and this broader search.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. I think that that Doug Hood's appointment to this position will will allow us that stability that I think that we're, that we're all looking for.
I would agree with all of that. It's going to be a great bridge to get us to the search that we start in the fall. So with that being said, I have a motion and a second, so I will do roll call vote on this and I'll start with Connie.
Aye.
Erica?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Doug Hood on being our interim superintendent for the year. We're excited to be working with you. And with that, I believe we are done with our regular scheduled meeting. So I will adjourn the meeting at 6:09 and we'll be back here on April 12th.